Welcome you to the October 13th Campbell County School Board meeting. Nice crowd tonight. It's gonna be a good meeting. We'll open with Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, well, we have a couple of presentations tonight, recognitions, and they're gonna pause to take some pictures after the first two. But as always, we're glad to welcome our Campbell County Educational Foundation. And it's always a good when you guys show up.
It's good to have money given to you, huh? Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Miller, Dr. Stanley, and members of the Campbell County School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again this evening. I'm Rose Epperson, and I'm proud to represent the Campbell County Educational Foundation. Other Foundation Board members include Susan Brandt, Dean Farmer, Linda Grubba, Vicki Maddox, Brandon Tredway, Kyle Andrews, Sam Vance, Dr. Hale, and Dr. Stanley. This group of volunteers worked to provide financial assistance to Campbell County students who are seeking post-secondary pursuits. We've been so fortunate to obtain funding from various individuals, corporations, and local foundations to support dual enrollment students, as well as college and career readiness programs at all four Campbell County high schools. With this funding, we're able to assist in empowering students through hands-on learning and career readiness programs, opening doors for opportunity for countless young people across our community. As many of you know, the cost to send students to the CTE Academy is high. Just the books, fees, and equipment can run more than $700 per student, on top of tuition, which can be up to $4,000 per student. Funding helps ensure the maximum number of students can attend at no cost to them or their families. The CTE Academy is offering our students inspiring programs such as mechatronics, informational technology, early education, in addition to HVAC, welding, machine technology, and the health sciences. Did you know that through the CTE Academy, students from all four Campbell County high schools have access to a variety of career paths, allowing students to earn up to 36 college credits as well as trade certificates? Tonight, we're able to again gift the school board $37,000 to help meet these students' needs. This amount, combined with the gift we plan to make in the spring, will pay for all of this year's CTE Academy students' books, supplies, and materials. I'm pleased to report this will bring our total dollars of support just shy of $300,000 since we began this foundation in 2016. We're thrilled to provide this support, and even more excited to see our student interests and participation in these programs grow. I also have the pleasure of introducing Campbell County, a Campbell County student who is living proof of the opportunities made available through the CTE program. Iris Ashwell, a senior at Alta Vista Combined School, is enrolled in the CTE Academy's Health Sciences Program. As a junior, she completed the Nurse Aid Program at the Technical Center, earning her State Board of Nursing CNA licensure. Her 40 clinical hours included rotations at Heritage Hall, the Summit, and Lynchburg General Hospital. Iris is also a member of the Alta Vista softball team, SCA, Spanish Club, and she recently joined the National Honor Society. She works as a CNA at Autumn Care, a receptionist at F. Reed Hopkins Pediatric Office, and she works for a wedding venue. After graduation, Iris plans to attend a four-year university to earn a Bachelor of Science in Nursing and become a registered nurse in the emergency room. She's been a valuable asset to Alta Vista High School, the Technical Center, and the CTE Academy. Welcome, Iris.
I would just like to say thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
I did wanna, of course, give the check. But also hand out some brochures about our foundation. Hope you all will look at them and learn a little bit more about what we do and if you would be interested in supporting us. So, and we have some for you all, too. Thank you.
I would just like to say on behalf of the Board, obviously, this is a great gift, and we appreciate it, and extend our thanks to all your donors. They mean so much to our community. And so, we don't get to see them, we can see you in the face, but please let them know that the Board just values their participation in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We also have a recognition tonight. Dr. Hale's gonna cover that.
Good evening, Chairman Miller, and members of the Board. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Wilkerson, Ms. Laney Patrick, and Mr. Smith to please join me at the podium. And you will hear more from Dr. Wilkerson about Mr. Smith and his prestigious honor that was recently recognized by our Board of Education.
Good evening, Chairman Miller, Dr. Stanley, and Board members. It is with great pride that we recognize Mr. Daryl Smith, life science teacher at Alta Vista Combined School, for being named a state finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, the nation's highest honor for K-12 educators in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Mr. Smith has devoted more than two decades to fostering curiosity, creativity, and a love of scientific inquiry in his students. His classroom exemplifies hands-on, mind-on learning, where students actively engage in investigations, construct their own data tables, and apply critical thinking to make sense of real-world scientific phenomena. He believes that all students can be scientists, and his classroom culture reflects this daily belief. Beyond his outstanding instruction, Mr. Smith's leadership extends throughout the school and community. As Science Department Chair, he mentors teachers, supports curriculum development, and leads professional learning that strengthens science education across the division. His collaborations with organizations such as the James River Association and Holiday Lake 4-H Center have enhanced environmental and outdoor learning opportunities for students. In addition to his contributions as an educator, Mr. Smith is a distinguished coach, he just came from practice, recognized by the Virginia High School League and inducted into the Alta Vista Hall of Fame for his achievements in cross-country and track. His commitment to student growth, perseverance, and teamwork reflects the same passion and dedication he brings to his classroom. We are proud to share that Mr. Smith was formally recognized in Richmond at the Virginia Board of Education meeting on September 25th, where he was celebrated among the Commonwealth's most exceptional educators for his excellence in teaching and leadership in science education. Mr. Smith's innovation, mentorship, and devotion to his students exemplify the very best of Campbell County public schools. We extend our congratulations to Mr. Daryl Smith for this remarkable and well-deserved honor.
Would you like to say a few words?
You have to, Mr. Smith.
You should do that, but yeah. Well, thank you very much for those kind words and support. And I would say Laney is absolutely fantastic, and I wouldn't have been able to even approach that award if it not for her. And she's just so supportive, and I think that she brings the most to all the science teachers in the county. And I think the standard of science within Campbell County is phenomenal because of her work. For me, it has been a lovely journey. I enjoy being in Campbell County, particularly Alta Vista. It is a special place, and I've managed to call it my home. And I feel like even, you know, riding up the streets and stuff like that, you know, it's often waving at five or six people as I'm going along and stuff. And it's nice, it's a nice feeling to be here, and I really appreciate your support. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well deserved, Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
We wanna get a picture with you, so I think we're gonna, as a Board, go out under our mission statement and get some pictures. Well, there was a recognition, and the foundation's always a lot of fun, but so is seeing you and how our kids are doing. So, Ms. Robertson, tell us how they're doing.
All right, thank you, Dr. Miller, Dr. Stanley, members of the Board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you, and we've already had such exciting presentations, I hope Iris will hold up to them as much as they have. So I'm here tonight to talk about our 24-25 SOL test data and information and updates about our accountability system. So first, I'm going to share with you our annual pass rates. And annual pass rates include any student who tested in that subject for the year and have very few exclusions, so they really seem to look like raw data when we see those pass rates. So first, I'm going to show you our reading pass rates, and they're at the division level compared to the state. So we're in blue and the state in orange. And you will see I've also left the 2018-19 data, because that was the last school year that we consider to be pre-pandemic. So as you can see in reading, we came in at 73%, and we've really held steady between 73% for the last three years, mirroring the state performance in reading. Next, we have our math pass rates that came in this year at 73%. And math, right after COVID, took a significant dive in 2021, not noted here on the slide, but we slowly climbed back up, and we are very close to pre-pandemic levels in math at that point. So it's had the strongest recovery, and it's really mirrored the state and stayed above the state in the last several years. Next, we have our science pass rates at 72%, and it looked very similar to math after COVID. And then we quickly increased in the last two years and have exceeded the state in science as well. History came in at 68% this year, and even though there was a slight dip from last year's performance, the state has continued to hold steady at 65%, so we have continued to outperform at the state level. So we're continuing to work on pass rates to surpass pre-pandemic achievement, and Dr. Hale will provide additional curriculum and instruction details when she shares the comprehensive plan updates with you. Next, I wanted to share one of our celebrations about chronic absenteeism. Last year, we were able to share that was a celebration, and it continues to be so this year. And this slide shows all of our schools and the breakdown and comparison to the 23-24 school year. And you'll see it's one of the rates that we do want to see lower numbers as opposed to higher. So you can see the blue there in every school has reduced, and the ones who pretty much held the same are the schools that already had very low chronic absenteeism, so that's something to be celebrated. As a division, we came in at 9%, lowering from last year at 10.7% and from 22-23 at 15.1%. So we really have had great success in chronic absenteeism rates, and we know daily attendance is crucial to academic success. Next, we have our graduation rates for you, and this is what we call federal graduation rates, FGI. And in the new accountability model that I'm going to give you more details about, this is the calculation that's used. In years past, we've often shared what we call OGR, on-time graduation rates, and they are always reported higher, and that's because they include additional diplomas, like applied studies diplomas, and other students who slide in cohorts. So the FGI is truly students who graduate in four years with a standard or advanced diploma. And so that's why it's the lowest that it could be of all the different rates that they are. Naturally, Alta Vista and William Campbell have lower rates simply because of the size of their cohort. It's almost like every student counts one and a half to two times those of our larger high schools. So next, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the School Performance and Support Framework. And if you remember, last October, I introduced this framework to you, and at that time, we did not have a lot of details about the system, but the Virginia Board of Education overhauled it to better reflect academic performance of our schools. This year, that framework is in effect, and it will report each school in one of the four performance categories, as you can see there on the screen, and using the 24-25 data. It is 100-plus point scale, and so each school will receive distinguished on-track, off-track, or needs intensive support with an overall score of the framework there, as you are seeing noted. So I'm gonna reintroduce to you the components and indicators, which are calculated in order to earn each school its overall performance category. So first, you have the component of mastery, and every school has a mastery component. And reading, math, and science are the three subjects that are counted in federal accountability, now part of the state system. And then some schools have English learner progress included, and I'll break that down in the next several slides. In growth, that is used in grades four through eight, and that includes SOL test growth and VAP assessment growth. And then you have readiness, and that is a measure in all levels, and it differs depending on the makeup of the school. Every school has chronic absenteeism ratings, and we just saw those reported. The middle school has what we also include as advanced coursework, where they get credit for eighth graders taking Algebra I. Then the high school has the 3E readiness framework, and you've heard a bit about that as it was changed from what we used to say was the CCCRI, College Career Readiness, excuse me, Civic Readiness Index. And so we've talked at length about the readiness framework in the past with some of the CTE information you all have had. But students are able to earn credit now in enlistment, employment, and enrollment, and it's an add-on, so our students at the high school level get to have lots of opportunities that then count for us in the framework. They also do give us credit for the six-year graduation rate, even though you can see that the graduation, the FGI, is listed separately. So under the readiness in high school, they give credit for that six-year with the applied studies diplomas as well. So those are the main components, depending on the makeup of the school, as to how the indicators are then weighted. In the folders provided for you, I did give you this handout, because it might be a bit small on the screen, and maybe a bit complicated, but I will try my best to break it down for you. So on page one, you'll see the framework for elementary and middle school. And the reason it becomes a bit cumbersome is because it depends on the amount of students and the different student groups that your school might have. So the difference of these charts is that our EL students, our English learners, do get credit for their English learner progress. That credit is given from the WETA access test that our EL students take annually in grades K through 12. Once they're in first grade and above, they would then have an option to show growth, because they would have two consecutive tests to make progress, and the WETA access measures their ability to obtain English language proficiency. So if you have a student group with at least 15 students, then the EL learner, excuse me, EL progress is part of the mastery index there, the weighting of 10%. If your elementary school does not have enough EL students, then the EL progress moves to the growth component of the indicator. So you can see there, our EL schools' elementary would be Tomahawk and Leesville Road, and then at the rest of our five elementary schools, the growth would then increase to 17.5% because they do not have a separate student group of 15 English learners. Not to say we have quite a few English learners in most of our building, every one of our buildings currently has English learners, they just might not have 15 to make up that mark. So you'll notice the middle schools work the same way. Brookfield Middle has a large enough student group to have an EL as part of their mastery index, and Rustberg Middle does not, and so the weight shifts in the growth part of the component. And then you'll see the readiness for elementary, they only have chronic absenteeism, and middle school has chronic absenteeism and advanced coursework. So all the weights add to 100%, even though they are spread across the components broken down in the different indicators. So elementary and middle all have mastery, growth, and readiness. All right, on the second page or the back of your handout, you then have the high school framework. Both of our high schools, Brookfield High and Rustberg High, have a large enough EL student population to have the English learner progress as part of the mastery framework. And then you'll see the graduation there, as well as the readiness that I've already spoken about on the previous slides. Both of our combined schools are unique in that they are made up of grades six through 12, so they have middle school and high school components. Everyone has mastery, they also have growth, because they have sixth through eighth grade. Then they get credit for graduation, and they also get credit for the advanced coursework, which is middle school, and then the 3E framework, and then the additional six-year graduation rate. So the combined schools have a combination of lots of the components to make up their 100%. They also do not have, neither have, EL progress, so that is moved around through their framework through growth. So that is how the different frameworks work, based on our particular school makeups. So when you look at the Virginia Department of Education for Resources, they break out these different components, but not necessarily as specific as our school grades have. So I hope that helps a little bit in understanding the weighting of the schools. For the 25...
Can I ask a question about the EL students? The schools that have enough population, they get... They get the benefit of that by some adjustments with them in consideration. Where schools that don't have enough of the population, they still have some EL students?
Definitely, yes.
So... So if they, say, struggle in reading, well, that will have an impact on, say, our combined schools? Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, it is, yes. So they're reading, so the interesting thing about our EL population is that it would not only play out in reading, math, and science, because they would have scores there. For those schools, then, that do not have enough EL progress, they would just not have that additional factor. The goal, our progress, and that's not in our slide deck tonight, but this year, we were at 61% student progress for the entire division, and the state only came in at 56%. So we're well above the state in our English language progress, but it doesn't necessarily give every school that indicator.
And they've shown more progress than any other subgroup in the division, including overall?
So far, so far, yes, sir. Did that answer your question, Dr. Miller?
Yeah, so I was concerned about, you know, a negative impact, but you're almost indicating that we may have positive impact.
Agreed. In the cases where our progress counts, for instance, Leesville Road, they came in, I think, at 63% progress, so they got 6.3 out of 10 points in their section of that framework, so it benefits them in that regard. So if you didn't have enough students, you know, it could impact you if you kept that part of the framework there. So it benefits them because of the progress that we're making with our EL students. It could be a negative impact if you were not seeing progress across the board. And then, of course, when you don't have enough ELs, then, of course, they just exclude them so that it doesn't have a hindrance on either way. Okay, thank you. So for the 25-26 school year, I was hoping that I was going to be able to tell you that the department had released publicly the framework scores and categories. And at this time, they actually have not even released them to us preliminarily. They're several weeks behind, and they have not updated their timeline. I anticipate that we're going to be in a good place when our data does come out in the next few weeks, and when it does, it will be available on our school quality profiles. They will develop a one-to-three-page summary report of the framework that you'll be able to see. It will break down all of the indicators and the component scores, so you'll see that overall framework and the rating that they will receive. So I wish I had more detail to share with you about those tonight, but that will be coming for you. Other tabs on the school quality profile will also be updated, because there are other federal and state reporting requirements that they must meet. There are additional resources in your folder for you. There's a one-page on the mastery index, because the SOL scores are weighted accordingly as we went through with those, with that overview chart for you. And then the 3E readiness framework is so complex that I wanted you to have that one page as a reference as well. The first link there, when you have this electronically, takes you to the VDOE site that takes you in depth and also provides historical information about the redesign with the framework and its components for you. with the framework and its components for you. I'm going to shift gears for a moment to talk about this current school year, and I know that you have heard in the news about the raising of Virginia's cut scores that was passed at the September board meeting are rated from 0 to 600, 400 is proficient, 500 being advanced. And currently, in reading and math, those cut scores are for the 2016 and 2017 standards, respectively. This past spring, they have new standards, and they were tested in spring of '25. So the state knew they needed to be revised to reflect those higher proficiency cuts, and also the intent was to be statistically equivalent to NAEP, the National Assessment for Educational Progress. They wanted to make sure that Virginia's student performance is aligned with national standards. So this slide shows you the cut scores that were passed in September, and I've provided this as a handout for you as well so that you can review it. They still kept the four performance categories there, and proficient, you'll notice now, is no longer 400 across the board. It does change per subject, per grade, and the same is true for advanced. They, there was a lot of feedback provided to the state that that is confusing, but the rationale was to provide transparency to the public because it's very easy to say, okay, the cut scores are still 400, but behind the curtain, they had to figure out what that actually meant with the new cuts. And so that's why they have done what they have done thus far, as far as changing the proficiency cuts to be different at each level and subject.
So, so they're all going from 400 to that proficient score? So let's say for grade 3, 4, 44 will be a passing score on that test?
Correct.
Up from 400?
Yes, sir. We do know that this will change our test scores, and there was a slide shared at the state board meeting to show other states that have been through the same process, where they've implemented a new test or new cut scores, and they've seen a decline in scores. And so the state board acknowledged that, and when they did, they decided that the best thing to do would be to create a phased-in approach. So they presented two different models at the state board in September. There was a four-year phase-in and a five-year phase-in, and what they did was created an additional column. So instead of just having does-not-meet, meets, et cetera, now you have the approaching column in between to be phased in. And I'll show you an example to make it a little cleaner.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir?
Would you mind backing up, like, to where you had the basic and proficient?
Yes.
What's the difference between basic and proficient?
So proficient is what they consider past.
What's basic?
Basic is fail. And then below basic is fail, fail.
Say that again?
So basic is your fail column, and then they have a lower below-basic column for fail. And I believe they've kept that because it's part of your weight indexes with the mastery index, because you get different weights for the different fails. So right now, basic is .75, but below basic is .25. And so that's the different reasoning. So as I am in jest about fail, fail, but that's the reason truly for the different weights.
So if you're in the third grade of basic, you get 411. You're still failing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, until you reach 444, yes, sir.
So why wouldn't they say anything below 444 is failing? Why would they even do that?
So that they could continue to use that weighting index of the new accountability model. Yes. Yes. So that was the four-year phase-in. I gave you the five-year phase-in. They're both in your handouts, but what I want you to see is this next slide that actually has a sample, so it makes a little bit more sense for you. So this is an example of grade five reading in the four-year phase-in model, and you can see their intent is to start in the spring of '26, so they have that as the first year, '25, '26. And the four original columns are there, and they've added approaching. So you can see with approaching, the intent is that would become passing. So as those are phased in, that is your passing, you're proficient. So for grade five this year, 414 to a 510, excuse me, a 509 would be considered proficient in this case. And so their intent is to phase it in, and so that way, even though it's no small feat to reach some of these cut scores, it gives you the opportunity to have a gradual approach so that by the end of the year, expectations are raised to those newly passed scores over time. And as I mentioned before, the approaching column also counts now as one point in that mastery index as part of the School Performance and Support Framework. So based on that implementation, it would give everyone time, resources, and guidance, families, educators, for everyone to help phase in and meet those new cut scores. They also are intended to strengthen how we can support students who need additional interventions, but also holding schools accountable as they begin to set attainable goals moving forward. So increasing them gradually helps progress meeting proficiency. They will not make final decisions about the implementation plan until the October 24th board meeting. So at this time, they have passed the cut scores, and they have passed that they will have a minimum of a four-year phase-in plan. So they're still going to discuss the timeline for phase-in, and then there are additional concerns that have been expressed, especially with logistics such as graduation requirements and credit accommodations for students with disabilities. So they have said that they are not going to do anything to the 2026 cohort for graduation, and then our retesters in high school. These don't necessarily apply to them. So we're still really waiting to hear the next phase as far as implementation in their plans. That website I've linked to the slide deck is the public-facing page that also has the handouts that I've given you, but there's also a place for feedback. So we've encouraged our administrators, we shared this with them last Thursday, we've encouraged them to take a look at that, speak with their, their teachers for sake of transparency and not to create, you know, panic or pandemonium, if you will. And our message to teachers is simply that we will continue to focus on our tier-one instruction, and our scores will show those results of meeting high expectations as we prepare accordingly. So Dr. Hale will now share student achievement updates with you.
One of the first slides you had showed SOL scores over the past 10 years. Course dropped from, like, 18 or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Is my memory, I know it's shot, but wasn't there a period of time when they changed the SOL scoring and made it more difficult? Or was that something else? That I'm, something, come on, boys, y'all help me out here now.
They changed it for one category. And then went back and said it would be discrimination.
I thought, I thought there was something that was changed where we were told that the scores would be lower because the, they had increased the difficulty of it. Now, am I, am I...
They had changed the curriculum. I think when we had a curriculum change.
Yeah, so typically, what you might have seen over time, I'm thinking, is that you see when there are new standards, sometimes you also see that dip. So it's happened over time in different subject areas based on that. What the kind of argument or conversation has been at the state level is that are our cut scores rigorous enough for students when we're looking on a national lens? So that's where the NAEP comes in. So the intent that has been shared is to get to that level of rigor, but the challenge is, we just had new standards last year, as you know, and then there are lots of components that go with this with graduation. We also have students who will test differently as far as cut scores in the fall versus the spring, because we have some students who will take SOL tests and assessments this fall. So it is, while seemingly this looks maybe simple, I don't know, there are, there are lots of pieces to it, and so it is one of those things that we're really trying to maintain. We're going to focus on the right things to move our teachers forward. We don't want students to panic, we don't want parents to panic, but at the same time, we do need people to understand that your voice does matter in the feedback that can be provided to the state, especially as we're talking about students who, making that significant of a jump in a short amount of time could be detrimental to them making progress and feeling like I can. So that's why we encourage everyone to share their feedback with that, but also understanding, yes, over time, you do see changes with standards that can happen as you have new assessments that come with it. But that, that has happened over time if you're looking at, you know, several years.
And the state's got an opportunity for public comment on their website, so, again, we would encourage people to, to voice their opinions. And I, and I think with Amy and Sarah did a great job of saying what we're doing about it. We're focusing on the main things, okay? We're not going to hit the panic button because we think scores are going to dip down next year with the new cut scores. We're going to focus on the standards, we're going to focus on making sure that our tier-one instructions align to the standards, that we have assessments that reflect those standards throughout the year, and we're going to keep doing the right thing. And we're going to make sure that our students have a great environment to come to school every day and support our teachers because they're doing phenomenal work, and we need to constantly remind them of that, despite the fact that it's going to be hard, it's going to be challenging.
Mr. Jones, I was thinking back, and when our math standards changed, we were in the 29, 2009 standards, and when that new test came in with the 2016 standards, there was an implementation dip. And so that's pretty common, too. And that's the slide that showed the other states, that was similar information that they showed. Sometimes it's the new set of standards, sometimes it's changing of cut scores, and in our situation, it's both.
So I have a question about our SOL compared to the federal NAEP. So where is, where do those, our kids don't test NAEP, do they?
Yes, we do test NAEP. Each year, there is a blind selection, and our schools are identified in a small population to test. Last year, none of our schools were selected. This year, we've not received notice yet if we will have any schools that test, but it could be a wide variety. You'll hear a lot about the grade four and the grade eight tests, but in previous years, we've also tested history. We've had, we've been part of a high school transcript study, so it's a wide range. So that means, even though what they're reporting nationally doesn't mean that a very large sample of our population was tested. So that's some of the scrutiny you'll hear about that with comparing us to NAEP. You know, I don't know that, you know, when you only test a handful of our students, I think that's a tough comparison.
I do, too. I mean, that's, okay. So evidently, NAEP, we're aspiring to, Virginia is aspiring to meet a NAEP standard, 70% proficiency or whatever. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
And that's why they're changing it like this?
Yes, their intent is to make sure Virginia students can compete nationally, and so NAEP happens to be, you'll hear it talked about, is the nation's report card. And so a lot of the research behind cut scores and testing achievement comes from the NAEP studies. And so that's their intent, is to make sure Virginia students are as prepared as the rest of our state, of our nation.
But we don't have a clue how well Campbell County does on, and...
No, sir.
So we don't even have that reference point?
No, sir. You can see all of the data online, but it's all just their NAEP national data. Thank you.
So the next part is really about our comprehensive plan and what we are doing. So great conversation so far with this. Every two years, we're required to give an update on our comprehensive plan, but it also makes sense, especially with the changes that we are having at the state level. As a reminder, we stay rooted in our mission statement. We are committed to making sure that all of our students are prepared to do anything when they leave our school division. That is our goal, and that continues to be where we, we, we do our work. We are continuing our work with the five Cs, so those have not changed for Virginia. They include critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communication, and citizenship. But you are going to start to see how we're shifting to the new model. The 3E readiness framework includes employment, enlistment, and enrollment. One major benefit that I see, especially looking at a high school principal lens, is that the 3E readiness really focuses on students having multiple opportunities to show how they are doing in employment, enlistment, and enrollment. So I very much look forward to having that final data to be able to share that because our students continue to do a variety of things while they are still with us that would meet the 3E readiness framework. First, we're going to be looking at curriculum and instruction, and that is the, the main part of our comprehensive plan. When this was written in 2022, we were looking at really making sure that we were implementing the profile of a graduate, which is still work that we do, but I do want to draw your attention to how we will be shifting from saying maintaining full accreditation, that is a separate process. Accreditation means that we follow the state's rules, per se, with how we're staffing and other components. So that is a report that is completed. Typically, that is done by, by me, along with our members of our team, and our chair signs off that we have completed that. We want to make sure minimally we are maintaining our on-track status from here on out. So those will be some terms that will be a shift for us. While we have looked at mastery of unfinished learning, making sure that our students are at grade-level proficiency, continuing to monitor assessment and data analysis, while we are very heavily focused on tier-run instruction, we really want to make sure that we are addressing all students and not only supporting the needs that they have, but enriching their learning experiences. With an update of where we are with implementation of new standards, as well as new instructional materials and resources, last year, as a reminder, we did have new standards in English and math. So that is, that is a lot when you're looking at implementation of two, two different core subjects. It was our first year of Bookworm's literacy program implementation, and we also continued our use of Intu Literature, which is our six-through-12 English program. This year, we will have new standards, we do have new standards in history and social science, so that is a shift that we are readily working on. It is also our first year of our math space implementation, which is our secondary math textbook. We presented on that in the spring and are moving forward with that. We're also continuing to use Bridges as our elementary math resource, and again, we are planning for an adoption for textbook and resources in history and social sciences with these new standards. The state has been a little bit delayed with providing some of those vetted materials and what that will look like, but we are continuing to plan for that, and also have had our curriculum teams working on that. We do also anticipate revised science standards next school year. Preliminarily, these look minor, you know, when we're looking at what that would be because we've had a more overhaul kind of with our science standards in the past. So it has been quite a bit when you're looking at change with our core subjects and how that has impacted. You'll also see the term HQIM, which means that we're giving our students access to high-quality instructional materials. So that is another term that you will, you will continue to see. We are very proud of our science work. It did just work out that we were able to have Mr. Smith here tonight, but also Ms. Patrick and all of the, the science teachers for the work that they are doing. The big shift that has taken place in sciences that hands-on for our students. And this year, we've been really working more on connecting our Bookworm's curriculum to the science standards at the elementary level. We also use Five Ponds resources in middle school. They are easy to read, and they're meant to be high visual and high interest for our middle school students, so those are continuing to be used in our middle school. And we also did make a, a big shift with our middle school summer program, and we focus on a main theme. This past school year, it was changing habitats. So that is what our students focused on, and you can see some of the pictures here. And of course, at the secondary level, we continue to use common assessments that are given across the board in our division so we can see how our students are doing and then make adjustments to help support them as well. I also wanted to mention here, this is our last year of our All-in Campbell Plan, which is our All-in Virginia funding. This was a lump sum that we received to use for three years, and there's three main pieces of All-in Virginia funding. The first part has to do with learning acceleration and tutoring. Originally, this was allocated for grades three through eight, but it said you can expand if you need to. If you know that you have students from K through two who need to be included, please do. So last school year, we provided almost 10,000 additional hours of tutoring in grades three through eight across the division. We also use these funds to hire our summer school staff for grades three through eight, and we were able to do that and keep the pay, I would say, competitive for summer school because we do want our teachers who are putting in that time in the summer to be compensated for that. This school, we're planning, we're planning for an additional almost 10,000 hours in tutoring, and this, we're extending it to grades K through eight. We do want to make sure we utilize these funds and are able to do that, and we'll also use this to hire summer school staff. So that's that first piece with tutoring and learning acceleration. The other big component is the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. It has now expanded to grades K through eight this school year. So last school year, we supported two of our educators completing their reading specialist endorsement, which is needed to provide the implementation for our students. And then this school year, we'll have two more who will be finishing up. We've also allocated additional funds for really... We've also allocated additional funds for really this content area elementary literacy resources that we will work on reviewing this school year and purchasing. A major celebration that you see is chronic absenteeism. We are seeing significant decline in chronic absenteeism, which is needed. We want to make sure our students are prepared for the workforce, and the first step with a job is showing up each day. For this school year, we're continuing to pay, in last school year, our family support specialist. This is Amy Witt, who works with our families. And we've also been providing attendance incentives for each of our schools, and that will continue this school year. So again, we are proud of the work that we have been able to do to address student attendance and also to also encourage our students to come with incentives. At this time, before I transition more into post-graduation and how we're preparing our students for all of those opportunities, I did want to pause for questions thus far because I do know this is a lengthy presentation with lots of components and did want to make sure that I had an opportunity to pause for any questions. Yes?
Do you know how we compare with truancy or absenteeism, you know, nationwide or statewide? I saw our values, but I didn't know how we compare.
We, so that's the other piece that we were hoping we had our final data because it compares us to other divisions. In the past, we have seen last school year that we were making nice strides with chronic absenteeism in the local area. But unfortunately, at this point, I don't have specifics to share, nor do I have the state average. Great question, so I will let you know once I have that, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I have just a general question for, why do you think we are plateaued at that 73, 74 level for three years now? I'm not being critical, but it just seems like.
So I would say one challenge with comparing the data is they're not the same standards for testing, right? So last year was our first testing situation with the new standards. So that is one, I think, piece just to keep in mind. It doesn't mean that it should necessarily be different or not, but they were not the same standards when you're comparing the school year prior to this school year. One of the biggest things that we are really looking at right now, and you've heard us say it, is we're initially focused on what are we doing for all students? That is for the entire class to ensure that that piece is the instruction that we're moving. I think the second piece that we're also continuing to work on is how are we ensuring our students are growing? And that is all students. One benefit of the model that we talked about with this past school year is growth could be counted for all students, not just those who have been proficient per se or in this certain piece. It was based on the student and how they grew. So it's really interesting to look to see what we're even noticing with EL progress and how those students have made major strides in their growth. We also had the first year of implementation last year with our Bookworms Literacy Program. That was a heavy lift by our elementary teachers, our elementary staff. And I think the next piece that you see starting to be layered in here is we need to make sure that we are giving regular assessments and responding to them, right? And making sure that we're addressing them as we go. And that is one piece that we're continuing to work on. So I think what I, what I see is we need to continue the work we're doing, but then also ensure that we're able to address the students that need that support while also enriching other students, too. Because when you see those cut scores, the shift is going to be, hmm, I might have gotten a 400 last year. This year, I won't, right? And that may, that might not be passing based on whatever I'm looking at. So it's important that we're ensuring growth for all students. But it is a great question because we're holding steady. And slightly above in other ways where we really do feel like we are, the work is being done, it is just making sure that all students continue to grow and that we're able to, to continue to move that. Any other questions before next piece?
You said this was a grant?
This was provided by the state.
And this is the last year?
This is the last year.
How much was it per year?
It was, well, it was a total of 3.4 million to be spent. And we received it in, you had to have a plan by October of that school year. So we really didn't start using it fully until second semester. So we're really about a year and a half in going into that. But we, we do have to, we are expected to spend these funds similar to CARES this school year. Great question.
They're not doing it again. This is it.
As of right now, we have not heard anything from the state that there will be additional funding.
So how do we, how do we replace that money when it, right?
Ms. McClain and I have had lots of conversations about this, that we are looking at that. We, we are at least saying as of right now, we do not have this funding. But we, you know, we're, we're not even in budget season yet, you know? We'll have to see. Plus, of course, we want to see once the General Assembly convenes and starts their budget practice. But it is a good question and one that we have utilized for the past few years.
But, but I will say that before this, we had remediation after school. We, we had to, we had summer school. So we will be able to fund it. It just may not be to the levels that we were able to do the last few years. We might have to scale it back a little bit.
Correct. So continuing with curriculum and instruction, another piece is that we want to make sure our students are prepared to have any, anything that they want to pursue once they graduate. Again, you'll see this maintaining on-track status minimally. One major celebration, and it's very fortunate that we had the foundation here tonight that has supported our work with the CT Academy. We've had 1,000 students who have gone through the CT Academy. It started in 1415 with about 84 stu-, well, it was 84 students. Last year was our largest year. And so that was, that was an amazing celebration. We had 116 students. And keep in mind, typically, our graduating classes are anywhere from 600 to 700. That's a, that's a good chunk of our seniors who had this opportunity. And this school year, we have 103 students who are at the CT Academy. So that continues to be a major celebration. And that just shows you the data. We did have a slight decline after COVID as far as recruitment. Some of CVCC's programs were virtual for a little bit. So then moving back to being in person, being able to, to do more recruitment and more awareness to our, for our students. So we are very thankful for the foundation for their support. Our Campbell County Technical Center programs are also a, a major bright spot. As you can see, that they have a variety of opportunities ranging from auto body repair to nurse aide one and two. This school year, we also have a, a new course, Design Multimedia and Web Technology. It's not new to our division, but it is being offered here as well. So our students are getting those hands-on opportunities as well. And then you'll hear more about this, but I do just want to take a moment to, to highlight this, that our electrical program has developed a partnership with the Greater Lynchburg Habitat for Humanity. And over the summer, they were awarded the VDOE Region Five Creating Excellence for Business and Industry Partnership Award. So that has, you'll see more. I don't want to steal any thunder here, but I, I did want to highlight that as a, as a major bright spot for students not only learning the technical skill, but also giving back to the community. Many of you have been here for our College and Career Day that is held in the spring for all of our seniors and for our Technical Center students. And so that will be coming up soon. It'll be here before you know it in March so that students get that exposure to a variety of different opportunities after graduation. And then last year, we also had our CTE Signing Day. This year, we had 21 students were recognized. And I really want to change that to 22 because one student was actually hired that day. After the signing day, they, they went ahead and hired him. He had his own little signing day by himself. And we also had two new companies that are our first time participating, Centra and Anchor Electric. So we continue to have strong connections with the local area and our employers in this area. We know that a continued need is exposure for our middle school students. And so last year, the Worlds of Opportunity event was held. This was for our eighth graders, where they get to go over to Central Virginia Community College and get some hands-on experiences and just get exposed. Middle school is about exposure, two different types of careers. So you can see the different activities that they participated in, including looking at some, some of the heavy equipment that is there. So that was held last year, and it actually is going to be next week. So this, next, the 21st, which is Tuesday after fall break, our eighth graders will be going to Central Virginia Community College that day and being able to participate in these activities. And of course, another major celebration is our STEM plus M program. We recently had our ribbon cutting at Brookville Middle School. So we do have the, this program as well as the lab and all of the materials and resources at each of our schools. And it's been great to see and hear from the students about how they're enjoying not only understanding the science, the technology, engineering, and math that goes with it, but also manufacturing and getting that opportunity to, to learn more. I also wanted to highlight another bright spot for us, especially looking at our ASPIRE program. This is a multi-year postgraduate transition program. I don't know that you might know all about it, but it's really provide to give specially-designed instruction for students with disability to really help them with that transition from being in the school to adult life. And so very, very fortunate to have this program and the support of Dr. McCormick and her team. These students, they, they focus on those job skills with hands-on experiences and really getting that opportunity to go into the community. We've had the joy at Central Office of having them come to deliver coffee and sweet treats. And it's just been great to see them. So you will also be able to see them in December as well. So that is another bright spot. We mean all students in Campbell County, and that is a major strength of our division. Another piece that we have really benefited from, from the Educator Workforce Academy. Mr. Jones was able to join in the summer of 2024, where we were able to really look and see what is the industry in our area and how can we connect educators as well as the industry. This school year and last, over the summer, we had the most participants from Campbell County at this event, and our industry partners included Arifin, BDMXT, Centra, Delta Star, Framatone, and Southern Air. This year, we expanded to more elementary as well because we want to make sure that we are giving them that opportunity to think about, okay, how does, how does this connect? And it was great for them to be able to do the tours, but also understand from the side of the workforce how we can continue to support, but also how they can support us as well. And again, the last part for moving into Objective Three. So again, we want to maintain on-track status, but really looking at our professional development. How are we supporting our staff to ensure they have the knowledge to support our students? We have had, let, this school year as well as last, even though last we had a little bit of weather that interfered with our professional development days, we have them built into each nine weeks of our calendar. And that is needed for our teachers to, to have that time, but also be able to collaborate. To date, we have 85 of our educators have completed Lexia Letters, which is the, the Science of Reading coursework that helps support literacy instruction. 85 have completed both at this point. We've also had 81, I'm sorry, this is a little hard to read on this part, educators have completed the EL Boot Camp with Longwood University. So making sure that we're also supporting our English learners. TLA continues to be a major celebration for us. Last school year, we shared that in 2025, over the summer, we had over 100 presenters with over 100, a total of 100 sessions, and again, had 380 participants, and 33 of the sessions reached full capacity. So that was a major celebration for us to have TLA. We continue to do that, and we'll actually start meeting next month to plan for this, this upcoming TLA in 2026. With student support, we want to make sure that we have high-quality, effective learning environments for all of our students in all of our schools. So to do that, we want to have positive relationships between schools, parents, and the community. We also want to support student development, make sure that we're encouraging character development as well as safety. Safety is a major aspect of the work we do. It is that foundation. For student support, as we have shared, our, our schools are very creative of working with students. You see some elementary students working with their counselor during morning meeting. But I'm very proud of the work of our schools at the secondary level, too, to encourage, get their students to encourage students to come to school. So here you see Alta Vista combined student who's talking about why attendance matters as well as Brookville High School. Because we know that students, while yes, they listen to, to adults, they also listen to each other as well. So that has been a positive campaign to promote positive attendance. We continue to have for student support our school-based mental health grants. These are, this is our partnership with Harvest Outreach to support our students in needs. We, we do have two school-based mental health grants at this point. We have been able and fortunate enough to have that continued funding to support our students. We're in year three of the first grant, and we're in year one of the smaller grant that was targeting early intervention and lower grades in elementary school. We have transitioned our early intervention program at Concord to Concord from Cornerstone, and also have behavior support in our elementary schools. Another major celebration for us, that was just September 26th of this school year, we have been working to get youth mental health first aid training again. It has been a while. And it is, you have to have someone who's trained, who can train all the people. So it's not, it's not as easy just to say, hey, let's do it. But this school year, we had 94 of our educators, as well as community partners and school resource officers, participate in youth mental health first aid training. So thank you to, to Dr. Wilson and everyone else for their help with that. We also have our BotFen curriculum, which focuses on positive self-development and also substance abuse prevention. This is done through our health and PE classes. It has been done in sixth through, grades six through nine last school year. And this year, we are expanding it to grades four through five to make sure that we're also addressing younger students. And then we also have implemented our Freedom 424 curriculum for awareness of human trafficking in grades six through 10. With human resources, we also want to make sure that we are continuing not only to hire and recruit staff, but retaining them. So we have changed our career fair to include classified and certified positions. And then we've had anywhere from 85 to 100 attendees in the past several years. We also try to do it as quickly as we can in February to make sure that we, we are able to get those who are ready to, to come work in the education field as well as for classified and certified positions. Our Cruise Into Success is also a major piece for our onboarding program. We have our Ignite Mentor Coordinators. They collaborate with our lead mentors to make sure that they have the appropriate support. So we're very thankful of that program. And then this school year, we've been able to add our Wellness Committee to really champion wellness activities for our staff and then in continuing our work with our employee assistance program. These are all of our new teachers from Cruise Into Success in 20, in July, actually, of 2025. So this was held at Russburg High School. And then also, we've had our Wellness Committee events. We had a night at the Hillcats right before school started. And I was shocked that all of these people still continue to participate in the 10 and four-plus miler with the weather that we had because it was not the best conditions. But it was great to see the schools have different teams and really be able to encourage other. So that was a major celebration to all who participated, especially given the weather conditions. And then also, we really have been looking at our salary scales. That is continued work that we do, Ms. Hunley and her office, and making sure that we're staying competitive. And as a reminder, we, we did have a substantial raise that we provided to our teachers for the 25, 24 through 25 school year. We also have ITeach as a program to make sure that our, our teachers are able to get that alternative route to licensure. And we've had 16 program completions since June of 2024, and we also provide tuition reimbursement. School operations, during the last comprehensive plan update, we were wrapping up Russburg Middle School. So you can see there that Russburg Middle School has been open for students, and we're continuing to evaluate our, our facilities as well as our services. Our major project, of course, is Brookville High School. And so these are some of the images of that continued work. A big thank you to everyone involved with that, especially understanding that we're remodeling a school while students are there, as well as the students. Thank you for your patience and your flexibility. I know we had some students that were here from the government class at Brookville High School. So that is, people have been great with that. And we always maintain our focus on safety. Since the last update, we've had our reunification training, and then that is extended to the school building and continuing our standards response protocol and threat assessment teamwork. And then finally, we're continuing to look at technology. So we have been looking at Magic School AI, but also understanding that digital citizenship is a major need of education for all of our students. And then we want to make sure that we are really ensuring all students get that exposure. Mastery Connect is the tool that we use for common assessment and assessments to make sure our students are getting that practice. And then also, our college and career readiness platform is schooling. And then also, our college and career readiness platform is Schoolings. So we're continuing to expand that to make sure that our students get that exposure. To date, we do, we have had almost twenty thousand teacher generation users of Magic School AI and six hundred and seventy-one total users. And then finally, this is the, this is why we do our work. Okay, we want to make sure that our students have all of the skills so that they are successful and are able to pursue any post K-12 endeavor. We continue to be incredibly proud of the hard work of our staff, and while we know we we have areas to grow, we are, we are ready to do that work and to support our teachers and our staff to do that work. So thank you for this lengthy presentation. Did want to give you a thorough update, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that we can, knowing that our full data will be coming.
Board members, any questions?
I saw some numbers on the CTE Academy, and I think that's different from the numbers for the Tech Center. But I'd love to see some of the numbers of enrollments for all of the classes in the years past, but also the waitlist numbers.
Correct, and it definitely varies by program because I know that some of our programs have a longer waitlist. We have seen a dramatic increase in the technical center. So yes, I'd be happy to get that for you.
Well, we know it's about three hundred kids a day.
It's three hundred kids a day, but then also by program, it, you know, that way you can kind of see what are we, what are we seeing? Absolutely.
The Aspire Program, how many kids do that?
Currently?
So we have approximately six kids in that class, but we also opened a second classroom for postgraduate, and we have five students in that class, and then we have four students who attend Project Search.
I was gonna say eleven students. That was, yes.
That's what Sonny Merriman donated the van to for them to use.
Very grateful.
So the Letters Program, you said we have eighty-five, and these are basically elementary teachers?
Elementary teachers, but it also includes coaches. I've actually done Letters training, so it could also include administrators as well. So it includes elementary teachers, but it also includes special education teachers as well as teachers who support English language learners because we want to make sure we have a common language for talking about the science of reading. It also includes, we have six through eight reading interventionists. Those are reading specialists, so those are included as well.
And are we seeing benefits from that? Are we seeing literacy, you know, improved teaching of literacy, especially at the early levels?
Correct. What we are seeing, and one of the benefits of Lexia, it is an approved coursework by the state, so it supports the Virginia, Virginia Literacy Act. It is not easy, though. So it is a challenging course that they work through throughout the year, but the benefit is that they are able to apply what they're learning to the students in their classroom. So we are seeing those teachers lead that work. We also, those teachers often are kind of our, we're looking at leadership, you know, in their grade levels as well as within their schools to help continue that work of literacy. We also do not put, we don't recommend, and we don't typically have like a first-year teacher in Letters because they're, they need to get adjusted. So we kind of have a phased approach of getting our teachers into Letters to make sure we're not overwhelming them and also overwhelming a school because it does require some time out of the classroom to make sure that you're processing the material together with your kind of cohort. So they do have professional days built in the school year, and so that is the other piece that comes with that.
But are we seeing a benefit to the kids?
Yes.
We are seeing improved reading across the board.
Yes, and I will say, we still have work to do for growth, though. So I want to always say that there's continued areas of growth, but we are seeing that the science of reading supports our bookworms curriculum and our literacy program. Correct.
And we have reading specialists that are trainers.
They are, correct. They get trained. So it's, they are trained to do it. So they're learning from their literacy coaches. And then we also have some of our our literacy coaches that are with elementary, but also special education.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for staying with us with this lengthy presentation.
Well, that's essentially what we do. That's the comprehensive. It's either give you a long list of dues and things that we're doing or or present and then we thank you for doing it because it's fun, you know? That's our focus right there.
All right. Anybody else to speak to for? No. All right. All right, well, we will move on to the business. And so approval of the September eighth meeting minutes. Ask for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions or updates on the minutes? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Payment of bills.
Chairman, I've reviewed the bills as presented and recommend we approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
The second, any questions about the bills? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of donations, Mr. McClanahan. We had a very philanthropic month.
Yes, tonight you have a very large list of donations. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve those as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions about that? All in favor of second donations, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There's a carries considerations of a request for supplemental appropriations. Mr. McClanahan, one comment I have is that to bring before the board an appropriation for ten cents and sixty-seven cents certainly shows your attention at the expense.
Unfortunately, you know, most of these are true-ups with our federal grants that we're required to do because they're on a different funding cycle, and sometimes it works out that way to be very small numbers. But at least that means we're consistent in what we expect to get and receive and carryover from year to year. So unless you have any other questions or comments, I'd ask that you approve those.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Other comments? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries non-resident tuition.
Tonight you have a few more students being accepted for this school year. Unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve that.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions about non-resident tuition? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consideration of school activity fund audit.
Tonight, we gave you the annual audit of the local school activity funds, and everything looks good. It's nothing out of the ordinary. Each year, our bookkeepers do a great job, and as you can see, we have more and more that have no findings each year. So I'd ask that you approve the report.
Those infractions that we did have, they were, looked like a lot of were just sort of oversight or, so they've been addressed and?
Yes, we send them to the schools and the principals respond with their action plan on how they're going to correct the actions during this school year.
So we're in pretty good shape?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right, I ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. McClanahan. Ms. Hunley, personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Similar to last month, our personnel report is very short. Where with our certified staff, we had a couple of resignations, but we already have replacements or plans in place for those. And similar to last month, our classified staff, we have a few losses, but just as many hires. So unless you have any question, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second, any questions? Gary?
Just want to bet the bus driver. So that changed.
I was gonna ask you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from this? All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, Dr. Stanley.
Yeah, I just want to bring your attention to a few things that happened during the month. I mean, September was a busy month. It's hard to believe we're coming up on the end of the first grading period, which means about a quarter of the year is over.
Yeah.
But this month, we had Constitution Day and Patriot Day for recognizing, remembering what happened on nine eleven, and we had a lot of participation throughout the county with that, which is always good to see. On September twenty-third, we had our ribbon cutting over at Brookville Middle School. So I want to thank Mr. Martin and his staff for for hosting us, and thank you all kind of for the last-minute turnout because, you know, we scheduled that with Congressman McGuire, and I think he gave us about a week or so to, to fit it into his schedule, which we wanted to do. So thank you, and Amy, thank you for helping pull it all together. On September thirtieth, we had the Student Advisory Committee meet. I couldn't be there, but I understand that that went very well. So so it's just a lot of good things going on. And if you don't follow Facebook, you you need to somehow look at our Facebook page every so often because Amy Abel does a great job of capturing all these things. And so it's hard for you to be at everything at every school. You can't do it. It's hard enough to do it all at one school or three or four, but she does a great job of capturing it all. So you need to take a look at it every so often, and just want to thank her for her efforts. And other than that, we're hoping that things are going well over at Brookville High School this week. We're doing a big move, okay? We're moving everything from the from the main offices, secretaries, all the administrators. We're moving them out, and we're putting them into a temporary location so we could start renovation on that space. And that's that's taken a lot of coordination this week, but we're going to try to get it done before fall break. So when we come back, they're all set up and good to go for the next phase of renovation. So anyway, that's going well, one step at a time, and and that's all I've got for you.
Do you have a reference that the board has supervised you? Meeting minutes. All right, the board, I want to start with Mr. Maddox.
Uh, like, congratulate Daryl Smith on his award. He's, he's an excellent teacher, and he runs about twenty miles a day. I mean, he's just all over the place. And also, apparently today, the AES pre-K was named to the Virginia Department of Education VQB five honor roll for excellence. That's a great prayer for the school. The donations.
It's time to speak up a little bit. We didn't hear, we didn't hear.
What'd he say?
We couldn't hear you down here. What'd you say?
AES pre-K named to the Virginia Department of Education VQB five honor roll for excellence.
Get out.
Yeah. The donations always seem to amaze me. I mean, for almost forty-seven thousand dollars this year, this month, that's amazing. And want to remind everybody about the trick-or-treat on October twenty-fifth, Tree of Life Ministries, nine to twelve. If you haven't been there, you need to go see it. It's pretty amazing. That's all I have. Twenty-fifth, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to echo, the donations were, I mean, they're always outstanding, but tonight was above and beyond. So that that's outstanding. Thank you to the community and all the donors that contribute to that effort. Thanks again to, or congratulations again to Daryl Smith. That's an outstanding award. Great news on the audit, Ms. McClanahan. So I know we dread audits where I work. I'm sure you look forward to them, but that was good news coming through that one relatively unscathed. Mr. Shields sent me a few things. We spoke about field trips with, you know, talking about Daryl Smith and trips around the area. Mr. Shields mentioned that the ecology completed labs at Holiday Lake State Park. We had field trips with the anatomy and physiology classes, went to the Liberty University cadaver lab, which I'm sure that was exciting. English classes, went to an outdoor play at Randolph College. So just a lot of involvement with our schools, with the community, going to different events and getting involved with some of the higher education, some of the colleges in the area with hubs and the plays and so forth. So I commend our schools for reaching out and staying involved in the community like that. Mr. Shields is at our Band and Choral Concert, which is tonight. So I regret missing that, but look forward to the one coming up at Christmas time. And we've got our homecoming and trick-or-treat. Homecoming's on Halloween this year, so that should be interesting. And then we've got the homecoming dance that next night, Saturday night, so. And he's got something else every day of the week in October, but I'm not going to go through any of that, but lots of stuff going on. So I'll just try to visit the website to keep up with everything going on. So lots to visit and do, so.
All right, I had the pleasure of joining the first graders at Leesville Road on their trip to Lehman Farms last week. We had a great time. It was a little chilly, but the kids loved picking out pumpkins, riding the tractor, exploring the corn maze, and jumping on the blob. This Wednesday, I'll be heading out with the second graders to Camp Kumbaya, so we'll see how that goes. Karen and I, feel free to jump in anytime, also visited our kindergarten classes as part of their Community Leaders Social Studies Unit, and the students had very important requests for the school board, which we promised to pass along. They're hoping for more balls on the playground, longer recess, more access to ice cream, and our favorite, a brand-new indoor playground, complete with bouncy houses, birthday balloons, and cake. Anything to add, Karen?
Yeah, we set up clay, though, I think, with our first group because they literally, they were rotating between the two of us. And yeah, I think we probably set you up.
That was their first question. Can we have more ice cream? They said you could give us more ice cream.
All right, so a huge congratulations to our Brookville High School marching bees for finishing seventh at finals, and to Brookville High School for being named Best Public School in the 2025 News Advanced Readers' Choice Award. Thank you to Southside Electric Cooperative for hosting our first-year electricity students for a day in the life of a line worker on October sixth. Got a couple linemen in my family, so our students gained valuable insight to the working conditions, education, and training requirements, career outlook, compensation of an electric line worker. Don't miss Homecoming in the Hive this Friday, October seventeenth at seven P.M., so come out and cheer on our bees. Reminder, fall break runs from October seventeenth through the twentieth. Looking ahead, Leesville Road will host its Halloween Steam Day on October thirty-first. Students may wear costumes and enjoy a fun day of themed activities. And mark your calendars for Leesville Road Title I Family Engagement Night on November eighteenth from five to seven P.M., where we'll have camping-themed activities, snacks, community resources, food trucks, and more. It's going to be a great evening.
Ms. Tanner?
All right, I'm not going to reiterate all of Kristen's announcements between Leesville Road and Brookville, but I will say on another note with Brookville, just prayers for Mr. Manley's family, one of our custodians who had passed away while he was still active custodian with us. And so we've had a big, big part of our community at Brookville, and so we've, people have rallied around certainly, but just prayers for the Manley family as they are still recovering from the sudden death of them. I'm just excited about the donations for Brookville High School. That was great to see some significant single-family donations that were given for the athletics and the county as a whole. I would, also, one of those youth mental health first aid trainers, I was on the training side of that, so it was really cool to see that we had ninety-plus. When I got the call, it was, we've got ninety, and we can only do a class of thirty at a time, and it takes two trainers per section. So there were six trainers that were brought in for that, and so kudos to Dr. Wilson. It was fully funded with some of the other funds that we've tapped into with some other curriculums, and so it was great to kind of be on the other side of that. But we also had our school resource officers there, and I had the room of all of our school resource officers. The most of them, I think, were all in the room with me, which was really cool to see, and their interactions with the kids and the stories and things that they were sharing on, you know, some of this is, it's going on. Like, we've, they're noticing things, and they're seeing stuff, and they're saying stuff, and and that's been wonderful to see. Other than that, Brookville High School's Halloween is JF game, and so we're actually going to have trick-or-treating at the stadium. So I think the cheerleaders and the band and firemen, I think, are actually going to have candy ready for the kids. So if the kids show up at the game, there'll be trick-or-treating going on, so that's exciting to see and still kind of embracing the fact that we want to support our our local sports. But it is interesting that it's on a, on a Halloween Friday, so we'll see how the spectators are. That's all I got.
I just want to lay out the thanks to Mr. Martin and Dr. Hale for the STEM plus M Rand opening or ribbon cutting at Brookville Middle School was professor. grand opening or ribbon cutting at Brookville Middle School was professionally done and to have Congressman McGuire and Senator Tepick and Delia Walker there praising it and saying, what can we do to help? Makes you, makes you proud to be, you know, part of it. So just kudos to whoever was involved in it. It was first-class operation. Again, thanks to the Campbell County Education Foundation for their pushing to get money to pay for the, I think it's the common thing for Campbell County schools. I think it's, it has a bright future for us and we just appreciate everything they do. Congratulations to Mr. Smith for his accomplishments. Wish him the very best. I hope he, I'm sure he's a great teacher. I'd like to sit in his class and listen to, you know, what he does. Dr. Hale, Ms. Robson, thank you for your presentation. I hope y'all are going to give us a test on it next, at the next meeting, but it was very thorough and we appreciate it and I know y'all put a lot of work into it. The other day, I stopped at Rustburg Middle School and visited with Ms. Condiv while she was on lunch duty and I'm telling you, just walking into the middle school, walking down that hallway, if you're a kid and you're not ready to learn when you go in there, there's something wrong with you. I mean, it's just, it's just even with, even during lunchtime for all of the seventh graders, I think, they had it packed in there. The hallway's still quiet. It amazes me. All of them are in there and the hallway's still quiet and she's very happy, glad, she says she's just tickled to death to be out of, out of the construction business. Mr. Bennett at Concord, we had a long conversation and the transition class that's at Concord now, he says there's some trying days, which is to be expected, but he says there are a lot of bright spots to it too. So if you want more information than that, catch me after the meeting and I'll tell you some more. But, and again, thank you for all the donations. My gosh, it's just a, it just, it just amazes me how they continue, how the donations continue to show up every month, so I just appreciate that and that's all I got.
Yes, wow, we all had a lot going on this, since school started, it's been fabulous. Yes, STEM Plus M was great, obviously always. My favorite part was talking to the students and hearing them explain. You know, a lot of that program came about because we kept hearing feedback from employers that no one could read a tape measure. Well, I couldn't have used the tools they were showing us for measurement, you know, keeping measurements over time and they were just thrilled to be doing it, so that was super exciting. Incredible donations again. Mr. Scott, obviously the students, they stayed as long as they could bear the fun of the school board meetings, but I appreciate them all coming out. Actually, one of the students even came out and door-knocked with me on Saturday for some extra credit. That was pretty awesome. Didn't even know she was coming. It was great. Then student advisory was incredible. Scott will probably echo too. These kids, I'm telling you, this generation, they see through a lot the last probably 30 years of kids didn't see through, very intelligent. I was blown away and I appreciate Dr. Hale and Dr. Wilkerson too and their leadership. They had some leadership skills like, I don't even know what the word is, exercise for the students and separated the seniors from the juniors and had them do this exercise. And what was great, my favorite part, was when Dr. Hale had us walk over here to take photo and then bring them in this room and you could hear the students speaking to each other. And, you know, now they're collaborating with peers from other schools.
Because they don't know each other.
It was great. They were talking about, you know, how many students are at William Campbell and then one of the Brookville students said, well, my senior class is like twice as big as your whole school, you know? It was like the different perspectives that they didn't, they don't really have, you know, unless they meet each other. And I did, for the board members here, we had them come up and sit in our chairs and it opened up so many more questions about how, what we do, how, what the format is for our meetings and stuff. It was just awesome. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. Look forward to it. I wish it wasn't just quarterly, right? It was a lot of fun. Constitution Day, I went to pre-K and I was exhausted after 20 minutes. So on top of thanking all my teachers, oh my goodness, pre-K was, was a lot of fun and I saw a lot of red, white and blue across the community and I heard from parents too that they really appreciated their kids were so excited to dress up in red, white and blue. So I thought that was awesome as well. Political Science Club and Government Class, I've spoken to recently at Mr. Scott's class at Brookville High School. Again, the kids having the most amazing, very detailed, deep questions. I'm just really impressed by the leaders that are in those rooms at the senior level. Legacy Education, I've gone to a few of their presentations to our senior students and I'm excited, some of the things the board may not know yet is, you know, the school's obviously welcomed Mr. Dunton and his program and to speak with our seniors. They have just done such incredible work there and now they're going to be doing some pullouts through the year to help teach our seniors how to be ready for a job interview, how to see their self-worth, how to have integrity, time management, some of these different, you know, little life skills for them. So I'm super excited about the growth of that program. I went to the marching band showcase at William Campbell combined. It was awesome. All four of our bands for their individual sizes were all incredible. It was really fun performances, was a lot of fun. And the other thing I wanted to mention, I was just super excited to learn about it and it was like last minute, so we didn't get a chance to get it off, off the ground this year, but from working with Department of Elections, they actually have a page program for our seniors where they can be pages on Election Day for elections. So I hope to grow that a little bit and I'm super excited about that. But yeah, homecoming's coming up, Halloween, you know, come by my house if you want to walk through the path. All the events that are coming up at school, it's going to be a really fun month for October and I can't wait to report back in November.
Thank you. Can I say one more thing? Yeah. Ms. Kirkland, the best part of the STEM Plus M event at Brookville was reading the story you put in the newspaper.
Your coverage was awesome.
It was great. What you wrote and the pictures were fantastic. We just appreciate you putting it out there for the people that don't attend or don't do Facebook. There's still a lot of people get all the information from the newspaper and we appreciate, you know, what you're doing to relay that to the public. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, well, pretty much echo what's been said. Always thankful to our foundation, the hard work that they do and, and then thank you to the community donors that just seem to pop out of nowhere and have a helping hand. Follow-up on the ribbon cutting ceremony, I think it was an excellent opportunity to show off our camp, our county's school system to our legislators. And I wish I had asked every one of those kids to shake their congressman's hand, you know, because who knows if they'll ever get a chance to do that again. But it was great having our legislators there and, and thanks for all the hard work that Dr. Hale, Amy Patrick did and it was just an excellent presentation. And I did take to the side and talk to a couple of the DES people and the Navy representative. They really commented about how unique Campbell County is and, and we think it's unique, but it's nice to know from outside perspective, people we don't even know, people who don't live here, just said this is just a unique opportunity, a unique location to be able to do this. Just think it speaks highly of what we do here, so. So, but yeah, it was great. Student Advisory Committee, these kids are very mature and we have a senior and a junior from each of the four schools and just the level of maturity and almost inherent leadership skills they already have is refreshing and, and hopeful. It's hopeful for our next generation that we have, have kids like this. So I think we're going to present them next month, so I'm anxious for them to come, but they're very engaged. One of the kids at William Campbell already has his own business and so very entrepreneurial leaders in their schools. Yeah, it's nice. Okay, so Brookville, Brookville Elementary School, I was down there a couple of days ago. I finally got to walk into the modular. This is not like your old-time trailer. These are substantial, solid, the rooms are big. The fifth grade teachers love them. They're working out all the kinks of, still don't know how they're going to get from the modular to the cafeteria when it's pouring down rain, but they'll figure something out. The other interesting thing is none of the kids at that elementary school had used the cafeteria as a cafeteria since the fifth graders were kindergartners at COVID. And so this is the first year that any of the kids have been in cafeteria. And Sterling was a little worried about that, but the learning curve was quick, so, so they're doing good. Let's see, yeah, and they love it, yeah. Sterling wanted me to share that they made great strides for attendance. I think they were at 97%. She's very proud of that and he wanted to thank Mr. Cartwright for allowing the fifth grade boys to serve as honorary captains of the home football game. While I was there, they were doing their run booster-thon run raiser and they had raised over $18,000 for the PTI. And those kids would run around the first lap and then it wasn't as fast as the second.
Out of the gate fast.
So, and Liberty University brought the football team on the 29th and student athletes read to each class and they somehow made a donation and they're anticipating $8,000. And they had their Veterans Day musical on the, or they're going to have their Veterans Day musical on November 11th. So, and we had the pleasure, Mr. Cartwright, you sent me a very detailed email, but I would just like you to...
All right, let me look at the email.
It's late on Monday.
All right, so our varsity golf team finishes the Region 1B runner-up. So they got to travel all the way to Tappahannock, Virginia today to play at Hobbs Hole at the State Turn and the whole team qualified, so that's pretty awesome. We hosted our Fall Blood Drive in conjunction with the Red Cross who collected over 21 pints of blood for our little school, so that was pretty good. And then we got our homecoming festivities, survived a middle school tailgate, had 85 kids come to that and we got 115 kids come to our homecoming dance on Saturday night. Almost doubled the number from last year, yeah. So we're very excited about that. And then our little band competed at the Celtic Classic and they earned a first, a first-place rating in the classic. That's the first time they've come at it in over five years. So we're very, very, very proud of them. And then we welcomed Brookville Elementary for our second annual DES night. Got to run through a couple like football players and be in spirit line and everything. They really enjoyed that. And it concerned to me, I'm not doing elementary school never. And then finally, I wanted to recognize one of our seniors, Landon Elder. He committed to continue his academic and baseball career at Farram College. Very, very proud of him, great, great young man. Good things happen down in Bullard River.
Hey, you're not to be outdone by Altavista, but you're working on a future center.
Yeah.
And have a career coach that'll hopefully start in the next few weeks.
Yes.
Big deal.
I do want to share at our student advisory, we asked like highlights from their school and what is the young man's name?
Seth.
Seth. Said, you know, last year we had a new principal and, you know, a little apprehensive, but, you know, he said the morale's pretty good and, you know, he said there's more student engagement, so you get a pass. So, so, yeah, they do, they recognize that things are good at William Campbell and we appreciate that. All right, I think that's all I had. Any, anything else? Good meeting. So on that note, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Two motions and a second. Any question? All in favor, close your laptops.